The meeting will now come to order. We are holding the June meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. Will you join me in a salute to our flag?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are happy to have with us this evening Mr. Hobson, and he and I believe some of his students are going to do a presentation from Project Lead the Way, so the floor is all yours.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate the invitation, Dr. Hodges, and his support. Let me start with this. You want to slide a little bit so I don't blind you. I have the privilege of teaching Manufacturing Systems and Project Lead the Way classes, which is Introduction to Engineering and Design. And this particular class, Manufacturing Systems, is an interesting class. I brought two students with me, Alden Griffin and Brady Parker, and they're, in a minute, are going to show you what they, a part of what they accomplished in class. Manufacturing Systems, I just want to give you a course overview so you kind of understand what they're doing in class and the opportunities that they have. I do a unit on manufacturing in the first week, and we manufacture smores. And I figure if they can manufacture a smore, they can manufacture anything. And so, we produce smores, they get to eat them, but before they can eat one, they have to tell me an input, output, and process. And then we relate that to the manufacturing world. And so, we do that. Then we do a quick unit on drafting, measurement, and reading plans. And so, after they accomplish that, and I hold them to some standards, I say, "You're all experts." So I give them a set of plans, I do a quick unit on safety hand tools, and they go out and custom manufacture to a set of plans a simple tic-tac-toe board. Now, if it's made from a set of plans, and they all have the same set of plans, one would assume all the products would look the same. So, when they are done with this, all I ask them to do is keep track of how many minutes they work at each operation. Before they do that, they have to estimate how long they think it's going to take them to do it, and how many processes and steps it is going to take them to do. And then I ask them to keep track of that as they go through that. When they are done, we line all of the products up in a row, and they vary from sizes and shapes, and some of them you can't tell are tic-tac-toe boards, and some of them wouldn't even make good kindling. But, that's what I expected, because they have very, some of them have very little background, have never done it before. And so, they aren't graded on the product. They're graded on their estimate of time, and steps, and operations. And then they have to tell me what they would do differently if they're going to do it again. Then, using the exact same hand tools and jigs and fixtures that I've built, we go in and mass-produce the same product. Their average time on those tic-tac-toe boards that they custom manufacture is about two and a half hours. And at custom manufacturing wages of eighty dollars an hour, they're about two hundred dollars apiece. We mass-produced the same tic-tac-toe boards using the same hand tools, and we produce them in about thirty seconds apiece. And they're all the same size, they're all the same shape, and they're all to standard, within specifications. And so, then they have a comparison of what mass-production and custom manufacturing is, and the skills required to do either one. We then go from that into computer-aided drafting and solid modeling. So I give them the set of plans and their tic-tac-toe board, and ask them to model them in a program called Inventor. They model it, they work through the steps, and then I have them, give them step-by-step instructions to model a simple wall shelf. So then they do it in reverse. They model it, and then they go in and custom manufacture what they just drew. And it's a very good learning experience. Now they have some experience, I teach them the equipment, they're using equipment, power equipment now to manufacture, and the success rate grows exponentially, based on what they've already learned and can apply. We go from that into custom manufacturing of the wall shelves, then we do product lines. Right? They have this wall shelf. What kinds of things could you innovate and turn it into to create product lines? So it's not just a wall shelf. Could you make it into a TV, a spice rack, a clock? What kinds of things could you do with it? And so, they spend some design time redesigning and innovating that particular product. And we talk about product lines, and then we go into designing for manufacture, which is, brings us to this particular assignment. And the way this particular assignment came about was my department head, Mr. Short, went to a department head meeting, and Mr. Terry Miller was presenting to the department heads some of the things he wants to do with the iPads and where we're trying to go with some technology. One of the frustrating things for our district, and for any school district, is buying an Elmo document camera. They're expensive, and they only have one purpose. Right? They take pictures of a document so a teacher can lay a student's work down and project it up on a screen. And they can talk about it, they can edit it and see the edits while they're doing it. It's a very useful teaching tool, but it's very expensive, and it only has one function. With iPads, they'll do a similar thing if you can hold them still, and hold them in a position that they can serve as a document camera, or turn them at ninety degrees and serve as a presentation camera. So, what we were looking into is a multifaceted tool. So, Mr. Short came back and said, "Hobson, your manufacturing class should design a camera stand." I said, "That's a brilliant idea." It's a real-world application, which if I can get real-world applications in my classroom, it just makes it that much more meaningful, and it gives them some purpose. So, I asked Mr. Miller if he would graciously come in and volunteer to serve as the customer, set up the criterion, what he would want, in a camera stand that would be functional, that they'd be able to use, and give us a price range. He did an excellent job, came in and answered a bunch of questions, gave the students the criterion on the board. They wanted to be two axes, hold multiple devices, use a separate light source, provide stability, portability, safe operation, make it adjustable functionality, and would work both as a document camera and a presentation camera. All right? So I'm going to turn it over to Alden and Brady, and let them share with you what they came up with for their design.
This is our camera stand, and our group was required to have it all cut out on laser. So all of these pieces are made in the town of Woods, and are cut from a laser. They're nested on CAD, and then the laser cuts everything else out, other than they put up in here. So this is how we got the constraints.
Our laser constraints were 2D axis constraint. The stand has an acrylic flap, which can be adjusted to whip down on a piece of paper. Or be adjusted in upward position for a presentation.
For portability, this is one of the smallest stands, so it's pretty easy to carry, just grab the two hands and carry it anywhere you need it. It's also easy to store.
Product is very safe, because it is cut on a laser, all the edges are smooth, there's no splinters, no splintering or very sharp edges, so it's very safe.
And for the light source, we didn't include a light source on this one, but since this is clear acrylic, it will help withstand the shadows, and what we need is a light.
The focal length, it's about the same focal length from the table or the piece of acrylic as the Elmo document cameras. It has no adjustable focal length within the stand, but you can adjust the focal length from the zoom along the glass.
The stand is very stable because of the acrylic, or the Corion on the bottom that will pull it down and keep the bottom weight down.
Materials that we use, we use wood, obviously. It's plywood, it's a twelve by twenty-four sheet that we put on a laser and cut out all the pieces that were nested in CAD. Corion, it's a piece of countertop material, cut into an oval so you can put your documents on, be viewed. Acrylic, it's a clear piece of acrylic that the device can see through, use a document. And then the PVC pipe, it's just this pipe here that the acrylic slides into, that way you can scroll to have your 2D axis.
And for multiple devices, as you can see, it's not, they don't really adjust multiple devices, so you can put an iPhone in here, an iPad, maybe a regular iPad, and it'll all work together.
The cost was fairly, fairly cheap and affordable, it's only a fraction of an Elmo document stand. The price is about thirty-six dollars is what it costs to produce one of these stands.
And we believe that this stand has many advantages over most of the other stands, and since it's a laser-cut, so all these stands will be exactly the same. And we believe since it is only a fraction of the Elmo's price, that it would be very good pursuit for the schools and other uses of school.
So the idea would be, if next year in class, we could mass-produce these and sell them to the technology department for a fraction of what an actual camera stand would cost. Their average were, what was it, Mr. Miller, seventy-five to a hundred?
A hundred.
Okay. And we can still make a profit at thirty-six dollars, especially if the donations on the Corion come through, to put back into the technology department, the equipment, and materials. It would be a win-win situation for all, not only the school district, but the kids are learning something, and the possibility of producing a quality product. And I would like to pursue other types of projects like that with the elementary schools. They have a lot of things that they need to purchase that kids and stuff cost quite a bit of money. A good example is I have a robot. The robot is all made out of wood and similar setup as this. The kit is twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars. And if I can get the price on, right now I can build them for about five dollars, and if I can get four by eight sheets of material, as opposed to the twelve-inch by twenty-four-inch, paying a premium price for that, I can get it down to around five dollars a robot. And then my kids can afford, they can afford to use it. And it just teaches basic hydraulics and basic pick-and-place programming, but it's an excellent step to the robotics unit I'd like to teach. What you see on the board is the nesting, and that would represent all the pieces before they cut it out. How many prototypes do you guys? This is revision one.
This is the fifth product that we made.
So, in the course of the time that it took all the other students to come up with one, this group made five. And they kept trying to make it better and better. The most difficult aspect was trying to get it nested, and we're trying to get it so we can get two out of one sheet of plywood as opposed to one, which would double our profits. And so, it was a very good learning experience on all aspects. I would like to share some of the other prototypes. We had a, they had to do some significant research, spent some time on the internet doing some research. We had one group come up with a PVC stand, and they don't have a facet in here yet, they just friction-fit it, but it serves both aspects. We had another group who had a similar one. They were going to first take a table leg and use a table leg for their adjustable net, but we couldn't, they couldn't find a good source, so they end up going with wood, and it rotates. It holds the device, all right? This stand was going to, this is called the Flat Stand Group, and they found one online that was similar to this, but it was made of steel. And what they were hoping, and they had to do some work, is that they thought the acrylic would be strong enough to hold it in an upright position, and it's not. So they had to come back and reinforce it with this, with the wood. So it got a little out of control, but it is adjustable, it does work, it does hold the cameras, it met all of the criteria. This one's kind of interesting. Let me put this one down, so you can see it. They did some research, found a company called the Snake Clamp Company, and you'll see these on microphones and things like that. They wrote a letter to the company and asked if they could borrow, or loan, or be given the clamp, so they could test it in a prototype. And Tom Zupor, the PR guy, wrote back and said, "We're prototyping right now. We'd be happy to send it to you if you sent us pictures back of the kids and what they came up with." And so, they sent the snake clamp in this part, and my students had already started designing this end effect. And when their end effect from Snake Clamp Company came in, they were amazed at the similarities. So it made our guys feel really good and excited about it. It is adjustable, it will slide, and it will hold the various things. The dilemma is, is the acrylic is kind of brittle, and so, a person's normal desire is to grab it from here and adjust it, and we're afraid that they aren't going to hold it up over time. So we would like to go to polycarbonate. A piece of acrylic, four by eight sheets, ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars. Polycarbonate looks the same, it's about eight hundred dollars a sheet. So, our price range and profit range wouldn't be nearly as good. But, they learned a lot, it was unique the way they came up with it, and the work that they did, and they were related with the results. It should be. Last but not least, and this, this was two classes and six groups. We had a set of students, thinking outside the box, came up with a crate idea. All right? So, if you send it over to the document, it will hold all four devices, they can rotate these up like that to accommodate the different sizes, and lock them in position, and it will hold it, okay? But then, they can turn it sideways for the presentation stand, and it still works. And then they can put it over this way, and they have it so to lock. Then they can use a classroom set and carry them in for storage. So, it was interesting the way they approached it and thought about it, and added some of their own criterion to it. That's the class, that's what we do. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you put me on down for one of those?
Thirty-six dollars.
Yeah. Pick a front. I have one question. When you're using, a teacher would use this, is there any way that you can get from there on a screen?
Mr. Miller has solved that problem for us. He has a program called Reflector, and all a student has to do is come up, type in the code, my code, and it goes right to the screen.
You have it in your iPad.
Yeah, it's on your iPad, and it's on our laptop, and so, that's why he wanted it versatile. He wanted it so if it's their iPhone, they can do the thing, if something goes wrong with their iPad, they can have it on their iPhone, they can bring their iPhone in, put it on, and still do it. And so, the more versatile it is, the better off it is, and less likely that the presentation won't occur.
Anybody else have a question?
Mr. Hobson, and it's Alden and Brady, correct? Thank you very much. Very interesting.
Our pleasure.
Thank you for being here.
I have more to do on that one.
While they're gathering up, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. This evening, we also have some guests here for a very special recognition, and I will turn this over to Jane Oakley.
Thank you. Good evening. It's always a pleasure to be here in June to bring an outstanding student to introduce to you and have you recognize. This year, our Bus Rider of the Year came from Grandview Elementary School, and I'd like to introduce first his parents, Tammy and Al Moore, his bus driver, Ms. Amanda Bentley, wave your hands folks, and his principal, Ms. Catherine Schluth. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce our Bus Rider of the Year, Wyatt Moore. Now, you don't, you don't. Each year, students are nominated by the bus drivers. We had more nominations this year than ever before, and we were real excited about that. We had them from first grade all the way up through eleventh grade nominations this year, which was real exciting for our department. And the students are chosen not just on their behavior, but on their respectfulness, their leadership, improvements they may have made. And Wyatt has just been an outstanding student for us all year, and his bus driver really appreciates his help, his leadership on the school bus, and it reflects also outside at the bus stops, and in the classroom, and on the playground. So, without further ado, I would like to, do you want me to do this, Mr. Dr. Hodges?
You can do that, but I'll come over and check this out.
Okay. This is from the Fayette County School Corporation School Board of Trustees, a certificate recognizing you as the night, twenty, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, I'm already in next school year, I'm sorry, Bus Rider of the Year to Wyatt Moore. He was also awarded a monetary gift from the Transportation Department, which he is saving wisely, his mom said, for a special something sometime. And this is Dr. Hodges.
Congratulations. Nice job. So Wyatt, I'd like to say thank you for being the fine, young, outstanding student that you are, and just keep it up and pull some of those others on your side, okay? Make them like you, okay? Thank you all for being here this evening, and again, our congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Are there any patron comments on our agenda items? Seeing none, we'll wait just a moment to proceed with the rest of it. We move now into our consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the regular business meeting of May thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, our personnel report, which contained retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera, approval of the May two thousand and fourteen claims number three five five one five to number three five eight four two, and preapproval of check for CMS grant money to Best Buy, and advance payment to Apple Incorporated for the iPad workshops in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. The approval to apply for Title I, and donations, which included acceptance of a donation of five thousand dollars from the Whitewater Vocational Builders Incorporated, and a five thousand grant from Lowe's to be used for the WTCC Diesel and Construction Technology Building. What is your pleasure regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I recommend we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Okay, we now move into the action items. We have our personnel report, Dr. Vayer.
Thank you, Mr. Virchus, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. We have at your places this evening a very short memo and a revised personnel report. We also at least sent that to you electronically yesterday, if those are able to receive that. There's some changes here, and in lieu of a second report, which we typically start to do in June and or July, we decided to revise this one, so it was the revised report. Folks, persons for your consideration, Mr. Virchus, are Christina Hary, elementary teacher, Alicia Bennett, elementary teacher, also both those at Eastview, Emily Burrow, elementary teacher at Fayette Central, Leah Fishman, special education and science teacher at CHS, Connie Corin, Corin Hastings, science teacher, CMS, Miranda Lad, language arts, CMS, Ron Paxton, special education, CHS, Megan Clixte, mildness disabilities teacher at Grandview, Joshua Roach, math teacher, CMS, Joshua Sanchez, elementary teacher, Frazee, Brad Walton, construction technology, WTCC, all of those folks beginning this new school year, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen school year. In addition, support staff members for consideration, Jalen Collins, executive secretary at Maplewood with the new start of the, start of the new school year, Kelly Bunch, special education assistant at CHS, Donna, Deanna Fowler, isolated instructional assistant at CHS, all those again beginning the start of the school year, and then two summer maintenance co-op students, Jacob Virchus and David Tussi. And then finally, Stephanie Baker and Aaron Chester have been selected or nominated for department chairs, Stephanie with the fax department, and Aaron with the English department for the fourteen, fifteen school year. Additionally attached to your report is the summer school recommendations for middle, so the elementary, middle, and high school, I won't review all those names, also WTCC as well, and I think that pretty well encompasses the report tonight. Those for your consideration, Mr. Virchus.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Vayer. Do I hear a motion that we approve his recommendations for employment?
May we approve the personnel report as presented?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Seboy. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we have the curriculum and textbook adoption. Dr. Riki.
Thank you, Mr. Virchus, members of the board, and Dr. Hodges. The new textbook resources that we're recommending this year with our high school English language arts nine twelve and Japanese one-two courses, as well as elementary English language arts and writing. We're recommending continued use of the current materials for the middle school English language arts, that's one, one more year, just putting off, giving us one more year to study the product. The high school French, Spanish, Japanese, three-four, expository writing, creative writing, journalism, media, and theater. These recommendations were approved by the Fayette County School Corporation's Curriculum Planning Committee on May first of two thousand and fourteen, and were shared with board members at the May board meeting with an opportunity to review the materials throughout this month. I'm recommending the curriculum revisions, continued use of materials, and new textbook resources as discussed at the May board meeting for your approval.
Okay, and I was just looking, but these were approved by your curriculum committee?
Absolutely.
Right, that's in the writing there, so, okay. What is your feeling regarding the textbook and curriculum adoption?
I move to approve.
Mr. Hilton? The motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Say.
Mr. Jones? Second, is, are there any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
We have the approval of the Head Start transportation and the non-federal share waiver request of Dr. Riki or Ms. Bobbs?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, Mrs. Bobbs is the, gonna present to us some of her legalese for the Head Start program for.
Legal needs indeed.
Legalese, yes. Head Start has a lot of requirements. Every year, we have for the, probably about the past five years, we've applied for a waiver of a transportation requirement in our program, that one of the requirements of the Head Start program is that all Head Start students be transported in a harness in the buses in which we use. Not all of the buses we use have harnesses right now, they just really are starting to enforce that nationwide. So, I would say probably the last six years, we've asked for a waiver. Children who ride our buses that aren't in a bus that has a harness, they all use lap belts, so again, we have an aid on the bus, and they are safe, but, but we've asked to waiver that transportation requirement until all of our buses, as we purchase them, have the harness system in them. So, it's just an annual, again, legalese requirement that we have to do, but we are asking to waiver the harness regulation, and it has been approved by regional office every year that we have asked for that waiver. So again, that's kind of a standard waiver. The second waiver that we are asking for, and again, with regional office, is our non-federal share waiver. And I know when we talk about the grant, we talk about that, part of our grant program is that we have to have a local match of twenty-five percent of every dollar that Head Start and federal money is giving to our program. And so, again, this year, our requirement with the sequestration cut was two hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And about at semester break, when we were looking at what in-kind we had already garnered, we noticed that there was a drop in what in-kind we were expecting. And when we got to looking at that, again, through January and February, the drop really, there's lots of reasons why it's lower. One of those is just, again, I think the board heard about that several times, how we have to calculate in-kind now, we have to use use allowance, we can't, that's what they say we have to use, and that did significantly cut our in-kind. But we also have had to, in the last two years, we have to use cost allocation because we partner with CFR. we partner with CFR, and we serve their three-to-five-year-old students in our classrooms. We have to cost allocate anything that we share with CFR, and that includes transportation, and includes even parent volunteerism. We can't count that in our in-kind, and even it goes, it's so stringent that even if we have a family that has a special needs student who's funded through CFR, and a Head Start student who's funded through Head Start, we cannot count any of their participation because they also have the CFR special needs student. So they have pretty strict requirements on what you can count now as in-kind, and again, those pretty much came through our last federal review two years ago. So that has cut our in-kind a lot, but what we really noticed was, the main shortfall is coming from parent community involvement. And again, community involvement, with the economy of the last 10 years, and programs being cut, and staff being cut, we don't have near as many professionals who are able to engage with our program. We used to have professionals in the community that would serve on our committees, would come to our policy council, but again, as their programs are being cut, their staff is cut, and they don't have time to do those outside things. We do get a lot of in-kind. We're fortunate, again, in our community to have dentists and eye doctors and medical doctors who give our program a lot of in-kind. They do all of our vision screening for free for our children, they do all of our dental exams free for our children, so we're fortunate in that aspect, that we do get really good non-federal share figures from those professionals, but again, it's the professionals that would attend and serve on committees that we noticed the drop in. But the, the big thing is parent volunteerism, and at first, we thought maybe the, the requirements with criminal history checks was a big factor in that, but it really wasn't. Some of the things that they're not doing, they're just not attending meetings, they're not, as they have in the past, they're, we used to have a lot of volunteers in the classroom, we don't have that. The, in the last, about a year and a half, we've noticed that drop, and, but we really don't think that's a, an effect of the criminal history checks, it doesn't seem to be. So at midterm, again, we had, we missed a lot of school in January because of the weather, but we did institute some, several programs, and that was noted in your, in your copy there, that we did institute several program-wide programs to get parents involved, so we did do a field trip. That is something that almost every parent wants to participate in. But we also did some school-wide events, like our school readiness carnival, we had a big turnout for that. We did something right around Easter time, it was a transition program, we've always done that before, but we did it differently this year, and we incorporated different things in it, we had a huge turnout for that. So one of the things we, we know we're gonna do next year is, this summer, we're gonna come up with a calendar, create a calendar, and start doing those things earlier than the year. In January, again, when we really start monitoring that in-kind figure closely, that should give us an idea of, we've already done these programs, do we need to institute something else at the end of the year to come up with that in-kind match? And one of the things in your, in your handout was that, when I wrote this on June the 2nd, we were looking at probably about a $30,000 shortfall, but looking at it today, we're down to $20,000. So we, we're still calculating in-kind, we've got two classrooms that still, we have not calculated yet, so we don't anticipate anything, we don't anticipate a big, a big shortfall, but in Head Start, you kind of learn that, it's better to ask for permission to have a waiver, in case we don't meet that number, rather than seeing that you don't meet that number and don't have a waiver, because that would be a big red flag for federal reviewers. So again, we're looking right today at a 20, about a $20,000 shortfall, but we have not calculated two classes on in-kind, so we're asking for a waiver, not only of the transportation harness regulation, but also of about 20, $20,000 to $30,000 in in-kind waiver. So those are two of the things that we're asking today.
Okay, Lori, on, on this in-kind waiver, how does that compare in money to like last year, or do you remember?
The, the money we were required to come up with this year, again, is $258,139. So we think we're setting at about $238,000. We really do anticipate $20,000 or less. That figure is down a little bit, the $258,000, because again, this was our sequestration year. So, that figure was down a little bit this year.
Right.
So, comparison-wise, comparison, it's hard to compare, and I will be honest with you, Mr. Burchett, because we've had to put into place the use allowance calculation, that really did move our in-kind down, but also just that cost allocation also moved our calculations down, as far as what the in-kind is. Does that answer your question, or confuse it further?
Well, yeah, I was just trying to do the comparison of, but this is money-wise compared to last year.
I'll be honest with you, I don't remember what we did here in last year, but I can get it for you. I can imagine.
But they graded the waiver last year when we asked for it?
We didn't ask for an in-kind waiver last year. We, we thought we were gonna make it, and I think we were about $15,000 over what we were supposed to have last year.
So we were okay?
Right.
Okay, so that actually answers that, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have a question? So, okay, then I believe that we're ready to take action on this, so do I hear a motion to approve the Head Start transportation and the non-federal share waiver request?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. And continuing on, we have approval of the Head Start priority points.
And again, this is something that you do for us every year. Federal regulations say that we must have it approved by our governing board. Priority point guidelines, again, are how we bring children into Head Start. Head Start requires that we bring in the neediest children first, and how we do that is when we start taking applications, we assign children priority points based on these guidelines. And so, the first children who are eligible for Head Start in any given year are the children who were served the year before. We do have some children who spend two years in Head Start, those are the first enrollees in the program. The second children who are eligible would be children who are eligible income-wise, but they also have higher priority points. So those are the second children who are eligible, and then the third is children with disabilities, who are three years old. And then the last are income-eligible, I'm sorry, over-income children with highest priority points, and I think we've talked about that a little bit before. We have very few over-income children, just basically because we have so many children that meet the income guidelines. This year, I think we're allowed to have 10%, which is 16 children. I think we had between six and eight, and four of those, I believe, were children who qualified under special education, so that's not unusual, but we also had almost four children who kind of fall into what I call the working core category. They were within $1,000 to $3,000 of our in-kind guidelines, but they had high priority points for other reasons, so they also were part of our program this year. The second paragraph there just kind of tells you what the priority points are based on, and it's income guidelines, number one, are you income-eligible? If you're homeless, that's a weighted factor, that's an automatic in, you get 10 points for homelessness, and we do have that in our community. I think this year, we served two children who were basically homeless. Are they eligible for kindergarten the following year, and again, that's a weighted point because we want to serve those children first, because they need to be ready for school. Do they get Medicaid, food stamps, TANF, and there's other things down there, SSI. And then Head Start coordinators, family service coordinators, can also appoint other risk factors, and we do have that sometimes in our program, that children who are so at risk for some things that don't fall into those priority points, and they can receive priority points for that as well. That sets up our classrooms, who comes in first, that, those are the children that are in, but it also helps us set up a waiting list. Head Start says we must maintain a waiting list, and unfortunately, in our county, ours is usually pretty healthy, we usually start out around 40, but by the end of the year, we're usually up between 50 and 60 children who are eligible, so. This year, the only changes we're recommending to those priority guidelines are just date changes, that would make that document current, but also, we added three priority point categories, and that was child protection involvement, and we decided to do that because we have a large number of children who are involved with child protection in our county. So that was something that we wanted to make a weighted point to as well, for three points. Do they qualify for childcare vouchers, and again, the working core in our community usually do qualify for those vouchers, so we wanted to make that a priority point, and working families, because we do have several families that have one or both parents working, and sometimes when you take a little step up, all of your benefits are cut, and then you're left struggling again. So, we do have several families this year who are attempting to work, but that sometimes would cut them out of income eligibility, but if they get some priority points for that, that would also give them high priority points and allow us to take them in as well. So, those are the guidelines that we need to use to bring children into Head Start. Any questions?
Lori, just for the benefit, would you define homeless, to me, homeless is having to live under a bridge, or, but in your case, that's not the situation, right?
No, no, I hope not. Homelessness, as defined by our local program, but also Head Start standards, is basically a child or a family who has changed residences five or more times during the school year, during any given year, and, and they don't have a stable home. They may be staying with relatives, they may be staying with friends, but a child basically who changes their home five or more times during any given year. We do have children, usually at the beginning of the year, that when we bring them in, we don't know that, but by December, when we have several different addresses, that just goes on the priority points, unfortunately.
Just a point of clarification there.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Then we'll take action. Would like to hear a motion for the approval of Head Start priority points.
Will we approve Head Start priority points?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and the motion carries. Now we have approval of the textbook rental fees for 2014-15 school year. Dr. Riki?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. It's this time of the year, we come to you with approval for the fees going into our next school year. The way textbook rental works is based on the cost of any textbook or resource, such as our digital resources for English Language Arts, we are allowed to rent them at 25% of their cost, so that's set by the state, and if it's a continued use, which we do have some of that, then it's a 15% cost for those years that you are under continued use. Then we have the fees that are paid for things like workbook, lab fees, and technology. The textbook fees for elementary students increase slightly, it's about $10, due to the Words Their Way, K-6, and Being a Writer, K-6 resources, for the English Language Arts at the elementary. And the following textbook rental costs were being recommended, kindergarten starting at $110.35, first grade at $143.35, second grade $129.59, third grade $127.36, fourth grade $126.42, fifth grade is $127.68, and sixth grade is $130.80. The secondary is a little different, because each child registers for different courses, and those different courses have different fees attached to them, so what we do is we calculate an average, so you can have about what the average fee would be. For a middle school student this year, it's around $134, and for a high school student, it is up slightly at $175. And then in addition this year, with our one-to-one iPad initiative, there will be a $37.90 fee for the high school students to rent the iPad for an entire year. The WTCC fee schedule usually doesn't come out until July, so we don't have that for you tonight. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I'd like to consider approving the textbook rental fees for the 2014-15 school year.
Hearing no questions, we'll move with action then. Do I hear a motion to approve the textbook rental fees?
I'll make a motion to, Mr. President, to approve the textbook rental fees.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Do I hear a second?
Say.
Mr. Jones? Okay. Questions? Last minute here. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the approval of a bid for the CHS baseball dugouts and backstop wall. This topic.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. We've had the, this project carried over from the spring bids. We had very little interest from bidders. We went back out, took competitive quotes, reached out to several individuals to see if there was interest. Mr. Duncan contacted other athletic directors in the area to get some names of people. We did have individuals pick up packets related to the project, never returned a bid. The lowest bid was from Friendly Contracting, the baseball dugouts, at a price of $32,000, the backstop wall at $7,000 with a release of liability for field turf and field damage from equipment travel. So that's being presented for your consideration this evening.
Okay, you've heard our report. You have any questions or comments?
Just one question. Janie, do we have any in-house people who could, if there is any damage to the field or surrounding property, that could, that we could take care of that ourselves?
Well, it would depend on how extensive the damage is. I mean, if, if it's pretty limited, sure, we would take care of it in-house. Brian Edge Combs, the athletic custodian, he'd go back out and work on it, you know? I think, the information I'm getting is, Chad just didn't want it to be that, you know, he has to have equipment out there to get the old dugouts out, and then, you know, has exposure that we come back and say, oh, you need to put a whole new turf in for the baseball diamond, you know, and, and he's expected to go down to Monsters and have that re-sodded and everything, so he was, he was worried about that type of exposure. You know, we've used him for other projects. I, I don't think we're gonna, we can expect that, we've not, we've not experienced that type of work from him in the past, so he just doesn't want to be on the hook for replacing the whole field. If it's minor damage, according to Brent, they ought to be able to take care of it, so...
What was Mr. Floyd's recommendation?
Well, verbally, he recommended going with Friendly Contracting. I did try and get it in writing, to send to Mr. Duncan for him to review it in writing, and go over it with Mr. Sargent, who's the baseball coach, if he chose to, but I wasn't able to secure that, so...
Thanks.
So is there time still to get that project done this summer?
That's, that's why we were, that's why it's on the agenda this month, 'cause this, this is when it has to be done. Baseball season just finished, and it, it's now or it's not, so that's where we are.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, what is your pleasure on this recommend, or this approval of the bid?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for the approval of a bid for the CHS baseball dugouts and backstop wall.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Do I hear a second?
Do you want, there was two ways that that can happen, one is without the liability and one is with.
It's presented with.
It's, it is presented both.
Yeah, one way is 41880 plus 7200, and the other way is without, with the waiver is $32,000 and $7,000.
The recommendation was at $32,000.
$9,000 less.
So how do we want to do it?
Mr. Floyd's verbal recommendation was proceeding with the Friendly Contracting, with the release of...
Yeah, the first...
Which is the $32,000 number.
Okay, okay.
Is that what you want to do then?
Yes, yes.
All right, so we have a motion, but we're waiting for a second then. Does everybody understand what you're seconding then, that we're going with Friendly Contracting for $32,000 with the release of liability?
I'll make the second, Mr. President. I'll make the second, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Anyone in the audience have a comment they'd like to make? Moving right along then, we have some report items for, do we have a superintendent's discussion group report? About a principal or director report? Director personnel report?
Thank you, Mr. Burgett, just a couple of items. With summer school beginning, yesterday, and the summer truck on the road for its third summer, we have just a few figures to report, I was able to get those late this afternoon, and after the first day of summer school, we had served at Grandview, 350 meals, including breakfast and lunch. At the middle, at the middle school, where high school and middle school are located, we served another 285 meals, so almost 600 meals were served on day one, which is quite a few students being fed, which is great. The summer truck is also doing very well, they have basically the gleaners grab-and-go information and packages to disperse, as well as meals from the truck, and they're averaging up the first eight days, 92 meals from the gleaners, grab-and-go, and 133 is the average from the food truck, so we're, again, close to 225 some meals that are going out on the truck each, each day, so that's great news. We have, just a reminder, coming up, the New Teacher Academy, I believe we're talking about that already, but, it, July 28th, 29th, and 30th, I'm going to put that on your calendar, it's the last Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of the month of July. We'll be inviting all of our new teachers for a three-day academy, we'll invite you for all the activities, hopefully be able to join us at least for a portion of one of those activities, one of those days. Welcome to attend all, or if you wish. And we're looking at this point, approximately 20, 28 new teachers. We have just passed the halfway point in hiring, we've hired about 15 teachers, we have about, about 13 to 14 to go, eight of those being elementary, about four in the middle school and one at the high school. So June 10th, we're, we're, we're about where we need to be, we're not behind, but we're having to really start to dig, and our heads off to our principals and grade-level teams that are working diligently to select the highest and the best performers to bring to you for recommendation. And so they're struggling a little bit because they're, the people are starting to move about and harder to get a hold of them this summer, but we have to be very picky, be very selective, to be, you know, top of their game when they ask questions of, and look through the number of candidates and bring the best we can, so, which we have tonight, we think are very outstanding candidates, we have some more in July we'll be bringing as well. So that's, all ahead, Mr. Burgett.
So you're saying that when you get everyone hired, there'll be about 28 new teachers, right?
Approximately, yeah, right at this point. That's, that's when I look, I don't, I email after tonight, I'm a big looking guy, see who else might be there, I go back, so, but yeah, it changes, unfortunately, we just lost a teacher this week, which was kind of a surprise, but, you know, those things happen, so, we'll pick up and move forward.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bayer.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tollitt, do you have a report from the finance department?
Too brief, I have, it's Mr. Burgett. As you're well aware, the work on the budget began yesterday with finance committee meeting with directors and principals to begin looking at their capital projects recommendations. We'll begin trying to narrow down those lists to meet our budget constraints, and then in July, we'll move into looking at the other funds. The second item is our copier lease. For copiers throughout the corporation, was a four-year lease, and will be up this summer. So I have started the work of looking at those replacement, a replacement plan for those, and have gathered quotes from four vendors, and reviewing those, and we'll narrow our scope to hopefully two of them. We'll then turn those over to Mr. Miller to look at them from a technology standpoint and get his input, and then hopefully bringing a recommendation to you in July, so that we will be able to replace those copying machines and move forward towards the start of the school year. Good, say, Mr. Burgett?
Very good, thank you. Okay, I believe we, or Dr. Rieke?
Thank you, Mr. Burgett, just one thing. About a year ago, we brought to you change in the high school, moving from a six-week to a nine-week rating scale based on the needs of the students and where we are with curriculum and instruction. And tonight, I just wanted to share with you that now the middle school is ready to make that same change. They wanted to delay a year, they were working on a 12-week course that wasn't ready to make the shift, but Mrs. Denham has made those shifts, and she is proceeding with next year going to a nine-week, so the whole system will be on a nine-week rating period, which will simplify a number of things for parents, I think, but as well as for Harmony Technology and is what's best, so...
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Hodges, superintendent's report?
Question for Dr. Burr, those numbers you have from Grandview and the middle school, those were just, that's a daily figure? That's not a combination?
You told the summer school feeding, yes, that was for Monday.
Okay, so if those are a daily figure, and the figure from the truck are daily figure, we're serving over 800 meals a day. That's, that's pretty impressive, you know?
On the average, those are just averages, we, some of the highs and lows, but...
Sure.
Yeah, but it's, yeah...
They're all free.
That's, that's impressive.
It's all free.
I wanted to congratulate Mr. Judd on, I think, very successful graduation exercises on Sunday, his first time through, I thought he did, he did a great job on that. And some numbers that really resonated for me, I mean, it was so impressive, and we had so many students stand up that had earned some type of college credit, that was over 60% of the class. And he said 81 of those students had at least 12 credits. At least 12 credits. And we earned nearly 2,200 college credits, this graduating class, and when you stop and think, when we really started getting into the early college and the dual credits, this has really, really grown, and I think that's something we should take great pride in. I've talked to you a number of times about our Super Chat program, we recorded one this morning, it's, it's up and posted, and Mr. Judd, Dr. Rieke joined, Gary Puckett, myself, and talked about the one-to-one initiative at the high school. So if you have questions about that, and kind of want to hear what, where we're at with that, I encourage you to, to take advantage of that. It's the goofy-looking fly leaning on the microphone, when you get onto our homepage, click on that, and it'll take you to, to the podcast. If you have some things that you'd like to hear us discuss, or if you'd like to be a part of that, you're always more than welcome to do that, but share ideas with us, that would, that would really be beneficial. And with that, I think I'll conclude my comments this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we move into for the good of the cause. Anyone want to share a comment? I would just like to say, I think these donations, $5,000, there were two of them to the Career Center, that's certainly a sizable gift, and certainly we appreciate the support of the community, of our school, and our corporation, and the various programs that we have, so, a big thank you to those folks. Anyone else? With that being said, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hilton?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
It's getting scary here. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the meeting is adjourned.